I'd like to say a few words about Dee Martino, the first mayor of the city of Grass Valley.
First woman mayor.
First woman mayor, first woman mayor. Dee was an incredibly strong personality who had a great will to make Grass Valley a very loving place. She was interested in parks and water raids and everything Grass Valley. I was the downtown association manager and it was 15 years ago this time of year, I think it was in March, that we did the 110th Grass Valley celebration, anniversary celebration, the 110th year of the incorporation of the city of Grass Valley. And she was so excited about that. We had this incredible cake and festivities at the Grass Valley Elks. Dee would command attention in a way that you knew that the situation needed remedy or that there was a goal. And she served with dignity. She was open to conversation. And in reality, when you met her one-on-one, she was a very loving, giving woman. And it's a great loss for the city of Grass Valley, but Grass Valley was greatly served by her tenure, both on the city council as a resident of our community. And we think of her fondly and wish her family the very, very great warmth that a community can wrap around it in knowing that their mother, their aunt, their grandmother is beloved by the community. So we are all wearing hats tonight because Dee wore a hat. And so that's our way of having a little bit of remembrance, a little bit of a sense of humor, and just a little bit of attitude which Dee always possessed. And so with that, God bless Dee and may your travels be great. Okay. So if we just take a second and reflect, if anybody... Does anybody else want to add anything to?
I think that you said that very nicely.
Take a couple of deep breaths and get ready to go. Okay. The city of Grass Valley cordially welcomes you to its meetings, which are held 7:00 PM the second and fourth Tuesdays of each month. Your interest is encouraged and appreciated. This meeting is being broadcast live on Comcast Channel 17 and recorded by NCTV and is scheduled for rebroadcast on NCTV Channel 17 throughout the next two weeks or three weeks. In addition to being broadcast live on TV, it is also being broadcast live on the Internet at www.cityofgrassvalley.com. Click on the meetings on video, city council on the lower left, lower portion of the homepage, and follow the instruction. This meeting is also recorded on audio tape. Council chambers are wheelchair accessible and listening devices are available. Other special accommodations may be requested to the city clerk 72 hours in advance of the meeting. Action may be taken on any agenda item. Please turn off all cell phones or similar devices. Agenda materials are available at City of Grass Valley, the City Grass Valley Public Library, or the city's website by clicking on the PDF icons. Staff reports and background information related to regular agenda items are available at City of Grass Valley, 125 East Main Street, Grass Valley. Materials related to an item on this agenda submitted to the council after distribution of the agenda packet are available for public inspection in the city clerk's office at City Hall during normal business hours. Such documents are also available on the City of Grass Valley website. And they're subject to the city staff's ability to post the documents before the meeting. Okay, so the meeting is called to order. Pledge of allegiance. If we move our hats. Bob, would you lead us?
My pledge of allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which we stand, one nation under God, in the name of the Father, and of the Son, and of the Holy Spirit.
Kristy, roll call please.
Councilmember Aguilar.
Yes.
Councilmember Arbuckle. Councilmember Foyer.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Swarthout.
Yes.
Mayor Levine.
Yes, present.
Four members present.
Agenda approval, the city council reserves the right to hear items in a different order. Order accomplished business in the most efficient manner. Are there any changes to the agenda?
No changes from staff.
There is nothing to report out of closed session. Tonight, we have no introductions or presentations. And so now is the public comment period. There's a time limitation of three minutes per person as identified by the lights. Items are not on the agenda. Items, for items that are not on the agenda and within the jurisdiction of the interests of the city, please come to the podium at this time and speak into the microphone, please. If you wish to speak regarding scheduled agenda items, please come to the podium when the item number and subject matter are announced and speak into the microphone as well. When recognized, please begin by providing your name and address for the record. Anyone wishing to submit written information at the meeting needs to furnish 10 copies to the city clerk in advance to allow for distribution to the city council staff and the media. So this is public comment time. If you're here for public comment, please come to the podium.
Matthew Coulter, Grass Valley. Our new speed indicator sign to let speeders know that they are going over the speed limit needs a new battery, I believe. It's not indicating the... It's not working, basically. Traffic fatalities are up over 14% in two years and climbing. I think it was just yesterday, possibly, a two-year-old was killed in a drunk driving accident locally here. I'm hoping with our new parking lot down the street that we're going to get a crosswalk out of that parking lot to get people to a sidewalk versus just leaving them dangling there. Second item I'd like to speak about in the public comment is the taprooms that are opening up around house, around town, house, as I feel it is. And the smoking that goes along with drinking. And they just go together, it's the way it is. And so, for example, the thirsty barrel, they don't have a smoking room, so everyone just steps outside. So all the butts end up on the street and the sidewalk and wash into the drain and wash directly into the creek. As well as now, we're going to have the Swiss house, I forget what the name of that, Twisted Eye or something. And then, you know, the new Trips one here. So we're going to have all these taprooms real close to the creek with lots of butts flowing down the walkway. So I'm hoping there can be some kind of program to the, especially to the drinking rooms, to have some kind of a container so people can put their trash in it. And last but not least, I hope that we can get the mobile sign fixed before, I don't know, before. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other public comment? Consent items, all matters listed under the consent calendar to be considered routine by the city council and will be enacted by one motion in the form listed. There will be no separate discussion of these items unless, before the city council votes on the motion to adopt, members of the council staff or public request specific items to be removed from the consent calendar for separate discussion and action. This is a roll call, a vote. Anything from the council? Changes, staff, anything? Matthew? Number four is consideration to enter into a voluntary cleanup agreement with California Department of Substance Control for several... Okay, we will move that to G, number four. And with that, ask for a roll call vote. Or a motion.
I'll make a motion that we approve that consent.
Yeah.
Hold on a second there.
Okay.
Councilmember Aguilar.
Yes.
Councilmember Foyer.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Swarthout.
Yes.
Mayor Levine.
Yes, thank you.
Motion carries forward.
Okay. Item four, consideration to enter into a voluntary cleanup agreement with the California Department of Substance Control for several parcels located on East Bend Street. I don't see... Do you have anything on that, Tim or Born? Make them... Okay.
No. So staff is before you tonight requesting authorization for community development director to sign the voluntary cleanup agreement with the Department of DTSC. So as part of this, in very simple terms, we have to have an agreement with DTSC for them to review the various...
Various removal action plans that will be prepared. So this agreement basically sets up a funding agreement with the Department of DTSC to review our RAS or removal action plans.
Have a comment, Mr. Coulter?
Matthew Coulter, Grass Valley. These parcels are property. They've been transferred to a new owner in the last few years, a mining company. And the previous owner was always put back on him that he and the property were owned by seemingly old people that couldn't afford to do any mitigation on the property. And not necessarily talking about the toxic stuff that this is, but the people that are out there. The people that are allowed to live on this toxic land, right now even, there's a dozen people living out there. Police fire danger from these properties have been costly to the taxpayers. And the runoff from all these properties goes both into Wolf Creek and South Fork of Wolf Creek. The first cleanup I remember on that hill, probably 15 years ago, eight tons came off the hill. Then that was a done deal. Eight tons are gone, it's all cleaned up, problem solved. Since then, there's been numerous cleanups up there. Until recently, when the road was blocked to get in and out of there, huge amounts of stuff was being taken in there and lots of crime going on there. So I'm hoping with the new owners of the property that they can have somebody on the property to keep it from exploding into what is the closest large homeless camp to downtown Grass Valley and the largest fire danger to downtown Grass Valley for this upcoming fire season. Thank you.
I'll make a motion that we approve item number four.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. The next item, let me get to the agenda, please. And I'll be right there. There's, I think there... Administrative item, removal of hazard trees affecting critical infrastructure. And so, who's going to... That's the next item. Where'd you come from?
I'm short.
This is hat.
I'm short, I sneak up quick.
My peripheral vision is, you need, and that, you know, I won't talk about the fire.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor. Councilmembers, for the record, Mark Butch and your fire chief. So before you this evening is a request for your approval to remove some hazard trees that are on the property and in and around Fire Station One, a piece of critical infrastructure for the city. Recently, we had a ISA-certified arborist come out and provide us some context to these trees. He identified 12 trees next to the fire station and in the mini park area in general, six of which were asking to be removed because they have a probability of failure and/or a likelihood of impact that will include the fire station, a residence nearby the fire station, and/or the playground equipment itself. And as you well know, that playground's occupied on a pretty consistent basis during most sunny days at least. To that end, we sent out a notice to the property owners or tenants that live within 300 feet of the property last week advising them that we would be seeking approval to remove the trees. I only had one telephone call from a lady that lives across the street, but it was related to a tree on private property, not the city property. Other than that, that's pretty much it. The six trees are certainly very large. I suspect they would have to be craned down, but we're here seeking approval to remove those trees in order to protect the infrastructure. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Chief? In the report, a neighbor wrote a letter to advise us about the trees as well. So we've been noticed that the trees have. So it seems important that when you have notification that you take action.
Yeah, I would agree.
This is an administrative item. It's not generally a public hearing, but if anybody has any comment on this, we'd be happy to hear that. We'd be surprised.
Matthew Coulter, Grass Valley. Yeah, I do have a couple of questions. Why this park versus any of the other parks? And is there a program that, for all the parks, that this should be done? I bring this up because I've asked for several years now, going back in the records, to look at the trees at Memorial Park and all the widowmakers that are hanging in the trees, already broken off, completely severed limbs hanging in there waiting to drop on a kid's head. No one seems to do anything about it. Also, the trees in the veterans' area. If those are going to be trimmed, they should be done before they're leafed out, not once they're leafed out. That would just cause the trees more stress. And the arborist that you hired, yes, he's highly qualified, and he would be a great person to have as a city arborist, even on a part-time basis, that could give us a hit list of trees that really need to be dealt with, not just ones that are in the way, but the ones that are the most dangerous, and so on down the line. Thank you.
I... Why don't you want to?
I can respond to the first part of that. These in particular were chosen in this park in particular, were chosen not necessarily because it was a park, but because of the proximity to the infrastructure of the city and the fire station. I can't speak to a plan for other areas as Mr. Coulter suggested.
Well, we've already done Condon Park. And so we have had a plan and we've been doing a great job mitigating that, the problem trees. So it's been ongoing, not just starting now.
Exceeded 250 trees, something like that, Tim? When Bob Butch isn't in...
Yeah. With the tree replanting plan as well, so...
You have to respond when there is danger. And if we have those reported that are widowmakers and so forth, then we will, I'm sure, send out public works. But we have people in the parks all the time looking at the trees. And we are aware about the trees in the veterans' area and we, you know, understand that there is a need to work on those. And that will be done at some point. Thank you. Okay, anything else? Motion?
I'll make a motion.
Approve the fire chief to enter an agreement for the removal of trees identified as danger to critical infrastructure around Fire Station One.
Second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Posed? Unanimous? Okay.
Thank you.
So this comes to the critical part of the meeting where you get to report on your activities for the last two weeks or so. Jason, could I start with you?
Sure, I'm frankly looking through my calendar. Let's just talk about the one, the one and the greatest thing that I, that we did, St. Perrin's Day. I must say that on, we got to talk about a few things that took place on St. Perrin's Day. One of them is regards to our chief of police and our mayor, who both chose to take a fall and allow Nevada City to win the pasty tossed.
Pentance, pentance, pentance. We'll have to go out and have a beer.
Next year, we are going to have some practice before we go out there.
Yeah, Lieutenant Ellis did manage to have his first throw be a bullseye.
Almost a dead center, yeah.
Would you say it was a bullseye? Yeah, I got the video in slow motion. Do we have the technology so I could throw it up there on the big screen?
He's bejuicing.
We're an inch off. You know, who says that an inch means anything? Yeah, yeah. On the mayor's and, but it's your, it's your report.
That's a bunch of ERC meetings and me...
We wanted to hear more.
Yeah, other than that, it was just St. Perrin's Day.
Yes, and I, I went to St. Perrin's Day also, and the vice mayor of Nevada City didn't show up, so Jason and I competed and he won, as he should.
So you need to practice.
I need to practice for next year. I also wanted to say that with the unfortunate weather that we had a couple of weeks ago, we did cancel the foothill celebration event downtown. We actually didn't cancel it, we postponed it. So the new date is April 7th. If you hold tickets for that event, your tickets are good. If you would like to buy tickets, there's still several weeks left, and I think that it's calling for a nice sunny day that day. So we look forward to seeing the community. And I just want to say, send my condolences also to Devera Martino's family, and thank you, Howard, for your lovely comments. I've known Dee for a long time. She was the, I was here the night that she became the first woman mayor of Grass Valley, and it was, it was quite something to see, and I believe she really paved the way for the rest of us. There's been five women mayors since her, so she, she was one of a kind, and she will be very missed by myself and many people in this community. So I just want to send my thoughts out to her family and let them know that we're thinking about her, and she will be missed.
I went to St. Perrin's Day as well. Got some good video of Alex tossing his with Nevada City. Unfortunately, it favored Nevada City. But did you, did you throw a pasty?
No, I didn't.
Didn't have to.
He was just videotaping.
I was the chronicler.
Tim throw a pasty.
But I think it, I think it doesn't bode well for us if we enter into a softball game with Nevada City again, so...
Why should we? There's got to be... Well, we've, we have pretty good representation on the trophy, so we don't, you know, we have to let them win once in a while so they come back. Yeah.
We just need Nevada City to have mayors that don't show up.
Anything else? So, yeah, I, I can't tell you I didn't try, but I maybe could have tried harder. I don't, but Dwayne and I have, really have a good rapport, and so I feel like we both won. And the turnout was nice and the day was beautiful. And remembering that our parking lot is the Murph's Cornish place in America is always fun, fun to remember because that's where the Wisconsin Hotel was situated. And, you know, the bar was right in the back and they drank a lot, and they had some great wrestling matches as well. And it's always great to remember our history. You know, you hear about bulls and the bears, and we had past, you know, wrestling and pasties and the pasty. And I want to thank Gage and the Cornish cushions for putting out the effort, and especially L and R Knitzer who really keeps it all going. The other thing I went to was LCAP meeting with a bunch of educators and community members, and that was interesting. That's a high school outcomes and developing programs and upgrading programs, and it's always interested. I know that we have a need for synergy between, we don't run the schools and the schools are a separate entity, but we have a lot of common, common problems that we, we should be working on, and I, I think it's important to hear what's going on there. And just one more comment about Dee and the, you know, being a strong woman mayor. She set, set up a, a system where our, our female woman mayors are strong, and I don't know, I, it's, you guys all try and live up to that, the women mayors that we've had, and, you know, it's, it's hard to keep up with you guys. So she did a good job of moving that. And with that, the meeting's adjourned.
And that was my shortest meeting of the year, so... That's the shortest meeting of your term.